Doesn't she know she's not running for reelection?
Four, four and a half, okay. Four points two.
We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Alderman Matthews.
Here.
Alderman Seig.
Here.
Alderman Malumbway.
Here.
Alderman Burgess.
Here.
Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Harmon.
Here.
Alderman Bray.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Thank you very much. We go to recognitions and appointments and we have one recognition that didn't seem to make it on the agenda and this is for a distinguished city clerk!
Let the record show that the city clerk is both overwhelmed and possibly embarrassed.
And possibly embarrassed and speechless and don't forget us when it's 120 degrees in the shade.
Really?
Okay.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you for everything, Cherry.
It has been an honor and a pleasure to serve each of you, so thank you.
And the reverse, Cherry. Thank you so much. Back at you, yes. Thank you. Next, we were gonna move to public comment. If you want to get questions answered and perhaps even engage in dialogue or to get problems solved, I do recommend that you come to the mayor's open house from 4:30 to 5:30 on Friday prior to each regular city council meeting on Monday and that way you can, there is give and take. Our policy is not to respond to public comment regardless of what the situation is and we have one person who signed up for public comment for up to three minutes and that is Scott Steinling.
I guess my concern is again tonight, and I brought this up and Cheryl will probably agree, that there are potholes all over this city. I realize that I've kept beating a dead horse and I'll keep beating it until the horse dies, but I would like to know when in the world are these potholes gonna be addressed, Terry? You know, it's amazing that if the city ruins a vehicle, they just go out and raise taxes and buy another one. Isn't that interesting? And there's a, the city of Bloomington, their vehicle use tax, I think that is ridiculous because I was paid it at City Hall and they said I could do it. Why go all the way to Normal? Paid it by credit card. Would you believe the lousy finance department couldn't get it straight? And they said, yeah, I know you paid it and so they deleted it. But you know, I wish the city would get their act together. You know, I know that you sit up there and think, boy, I just wish you'd go away. Well, Terry, I hate to admit it, but I'm not going away. Maybe you can go away, but I'm not going to. Let's see the city step up to the plate and fix the streets, fix the sidewalks. It's amazing that all the sidewalks are great down here by City Hall, but take a gander out in the real world, Terry, and you're gonna find out they're not that way. Now, I'm sorry that you don't like it. If Jim Carsh was here, I'd give him a piece of my mind, but you guys keep raising taxes. When are you gonna live within your means? Or is that not in your vocabulary? I would think you being at a university, you could really understand a person's frustration, but I guess not. Maybe that's too much to ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Move right along to our consent agenda and I did wanna turn to Mr. Boyle to make one quick statement before we consider our consent agenda.
That's correct. This has to do with item 7E, which involves consideration of an ordinance approving and accepting an easement from the Bloomington and Normal Water Reclamation District where the city has water mains and in fact has had water mains since 1929. The ordinance referenced an easement grant description and plat, inadvertently were not in the packets. They've since been passed out to council and just wanted to call your attention to them. They're referenced in the ordinance. That's it, statement.
Okay. Questions of Mr. Boyle before we consider this? Thank you very much, George.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Alderwoman Bray.
I'd like to poll item 7A.
Okay, 7A, okay. Any other items that any members of the city council would like to have polled for separate consideration other than item 7A? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item 7A?
So moved.
Moved by Alderwoman Halman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Painter. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, if everyone will please vote? Okay. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk, and I'm gonna go ahead and turn over the consideration of item 7A to Alderwoman Bray.
Thank you, Mayor Renner. Item 7A relates to the minutes from our December 10 meeting and I've reviewed those minutes and there is one item that was item 7G as in girl on that, in that meeting, that had some discussion and we actually divided that in half into two votes if you recall and that's reflected, but the second vote, I noted as an "I" and I actually recused myself from that. So if that, we could amend that in the minutes to show the recusal, that would be my motion.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion of Alderwoman Bray?
A second.
Second by Alderwoman Schmidt. Any questions? If not, go ahead and, if you'll go, everyone go ahead and vote on the motion as presented and seconded. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. The minutes will stand as amended by Alderwoman Bray. Thank you so much. Okay. And just to clarify, those of you who may have been here for the, for liquor licenses, they have been approved as part of the consent agenda. Thank you. We move, whoops, excuse me. Right along to our regular agenda, item 8A, consideration of two ordinances approving the 2018 tax levies for the city of Bloomington and the Bloomington Public Library as requested by the Finance Department and I'm gonna go ahead and turn this over for a brief overview by Mr. Gleason and Scott Rathbun. Mr. Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Bless you. We have the duty of adopting the tax levy for both the city and the library. That's the two different ordinances that the mayor mentioned. We have provided a couple of slides for each finance director. Scott Rathbun's gonna go over and then take any questions. Council was very clear that you wanted a property tax rate that was very similar to what we had in the previous year and was able to deliver that to council and the community. Scott?
Yes, we're presenting to adopt the same dollar amounts that we presented in the estimate on November 26. We know that it's very publicly been declared the CBL valuation decrease, but it had a very immaterial effect on the overall tax rate, only affected it by taking it up by .00386 percent because basically we're just looking at a $5.4 million assessed value decrease on a one point, almost $9 billion total EAV for the city. So I just wanted to put that out there from the start. So right now to focus on the dollar amounts, that's what we're presenting this evening, 20.286 million for the city. That's a $225,000 increase over the prior year. 4.871, 872 million for the library, $48,000 increase over the prior year. For a total property tax levy for the city and library of 25.158 million. So right here, this 1.338 percent, that's 1.34 rounding up, we're essentially looking at the exact same rate over the prior year even with the adjustment to CBL. We still, and we have room to move for other tax challenges.
And if you'd clarify for the average home of say $165, $160,000, what would that mean to their property tax bill for the city?
For the increase?
Yes.
It was a $1.46, I believe.
Total, including the library, including the library and everything.
For the total, as far as the adjustment goes, between the estimated rate and what we're calculating now with the CBL decrease.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sure that would be, that's gonna be one of the first questions that people would ask us, so thank you. Questions by the members of the council? Comments? Okay. You might wanna hang around as we, I'm gonna now be searching for a resolution and a motion on this.
I'll make a motion. We approve as presented.
Okay. A move by Alderman Black. Is that a second by Alderwoman Schmidt?
It was an attempted one, yes.
Okay. By Alderwoman Schmidt. And any further discussion, questions, comments? Okay, if everyone will go ahead and vote? And the motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. And thank you so much to our staff for putting all this together. Very much appreciate that. Now we move, and just to clarify, I'm assuming we didn't specify that you were talking about A and B or you, or was that just A? Yes. You meant A and B. Okay, that was, just for the record, that was the assumption. Was there any questions by anybody about that? Okay, so we then move to the city manager's discussion.
For item B.
Yeah. Well, we did A and B in one.
Eight A, one, A and B.
Eight, A, one and two. You did not even mean to include B.
We back up and just have, can we have a motion for eight A being the two ordinances and then have a separate one for A, B?
We are, George.
I had intended the motion to be A, one and two. Eight A, one and two.
Okay.
Are we okay passing an ordinance?
It is.
Yes.
And then we're gonna move on to.
And that part has passed. We're just, was there anyone who voted on that who thought differently? Okay, so I think we're done with that. So we are gonna move on to 8B as in Boy, consideration of two resolutions of abatement of property taxes totaling $5,861,610.85 as requested by the Finance Department. I'm gonna turn that over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This would be for items B1 and B2. Scott Rathbun, you have a couple of slides for this as well, don't you? And based on the affirmative for the previous item, we have two resolutions for abatement, for consideration. Scott?
Minus Scott, or am I? There we go. Okay, this is somewhat a matter of housekeeping. The city's bond ordinances, every time we issue new bonds, we secure the debt service with property tax levies. So every year we need to abate the amount that we're going to cover with other sources of revenue from the city. So that would be, or excuse me, sales tax, all the other revenue sources. So this year we have a total of $5.86 million in abatements that we need because we, we've been levying $2.2 million a year for debt service. So this is the difference in the debt, debt service that we need for next year.
Okay. Questions, Mr. Scott, Mr. Rathbun? All right. Questions of Mr. Gleason. Okay, is there a motion on this item? Moved by, yes, excuse me, Alderman Black.
Yes. Or Alderman Scott, I don't know. So I will make a motion that we pass item 8B 1 and 2 as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Alderwoman Schmidt. Any further discussion? Seeing none, if we'll go ahead and vote. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Scott, and thank you, Tim. I appreciate that. And now we move to the Finance Director's report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I've got a handful of items to comment on, but Scott, since you're here, we'll go ahead and move to the monthly Finance Director's report first. We continue to be very pleased with where we are year-to-date and definitely working towards a January, February timeline to openly discuss next year's budget with approval coming up likely in March or April. Scott?
Since we were talking about bonds, first thing I would like to announce is that we closed on our refinance of the 11.8 million that you voted on in November 26. So that will be saving a million dollars over the next seven to eight years. So we're very happy about that. The good news continues. Everyone knock on wood or whatever, cross your fingers. Home rule sales tax, as you can see, $399,000 variance over budget, 342 over prior year. Going right down the list, we're seeing some consistency. The state sales tax, it's just, it's been running under. We had a very good prior year we based the budget on and we know there's an anomaly in that prior year. So that's actually performing well. It's just we overbudgeted and it's due to the prior year activity. Income tax, utility tax, food and beverage, my comments as in the past, food and beverage, home rule sales tax. Hopefully that's a good indicator of the sentiment in the, in the city as far as the economy is going. And then bumping on down to local use tax, the $133,000. That's where the internet sales tax is being realized. That started trending up, you know, before that went into effect. From what I understand, a lot of online retailers were aware that it was coming down the road and they started voluntarily submitting or remitting ahead of time. So that's trending very favorably for us, $133,000 over budget, 111 over the prior year. The general fund statement. I've left the projection, the same as last month. We're gonna give that another month before we update it, but I've reformatted this statement so that it reads more easily. So we've got the budget, revised budget, year-to-date actual, what's remaining, and then I put in the column for the projection. These are the adjustments to the budget. So we're expecting right now $400,000 more in revenue. So the projected year-end now is 86 million, 85.99 million. And then you can see the comparison to prior year. So if you're looking at this statement, hopefully that's gonna work out better as far as the line of sight across and doing your comparisons. One point, I'm gonna jump down to the bottom of the projected year-end column. Right now we're projecting a surplus of 1.2 million. Everything is still going that direction. I'm anticipating actually bumping that up next month. We wanna see one more month of results as far as the vacancy savings and the revenue trajectory. If you're looking, and what I do, you know, we're comparing the budget, comparing the prior year, trying to get a pulse on if there's any variances that we need to be noting. You know, if you're looking through this and you look at the other intergovernmental expense and you look at, this year we're at 10.1 million, last year we were at 12.3. It's just, it's a timing difference in when we get, the property, the final property tax payment came in a little later this year from the county. So we didn't remit for the police and fire pensions until December. So you know, that's, that's what's causing that difference. In the next month, we should see that line up pretty evenly. So that, that's the kinda review we do in finance and that's the kinda thing I wanted to point out. When you're looking at these statements, it doesn't always indicate there's an issue. You always have to look at the variance and underlying reasoning. We're a little early in the month to be able to have all the finances in for the enterprise fund, so this is all I have for this month as far as a financial update. Any questions?
Questions, comments? Seeing none? Thank you very much. Anything else, Mr. Gleason?
Yes, I do, Mayor. I got a handful. And I guess I'll share again what I said in the front end of Scott's presentation. We'll have a very public discussion, January and February, working towards the FY '20 budget and targeting March or April approval for the May 1 to April 30 budget for next year. I think Scott does an excellent job. You know, when you put up, you know, a lot of numbers like that, very much something that I wanted to have a monthly finance report, but credit goes to Scott for being able to, I believe, explain the numbers very well. And then also when some things just don't necessarily line up, it's, it's an explanation where we share why, because we got a lot of sharp people, you know, not only on this council but within the community. So his explanation as to why, I think is well done on his part. All right, real quick. The deputy city manager search, this is something that council's aware of but wanted to share an update. I think it was a Panograph article this past weekend and where we are at. Would have been early, second week of November posted, you know, on many different websites, tried to attract nationwide interest and then the posting came down on December 1st. No consultant was hired. You've got a few hundred dollars that was spent to, you know, post on the various professional websites and we've done extremely well. professional websites, and we've done extremely well. We had 30-plus applicants, 20-plus met the criteria, and it was pretty stringent criteria for the deputy city manager position. And I formed a team of department directors to interview five candidates that we figure were what we called tier-one applicants, and they, those interviews are ongoing and still hope to target, you know, somebody in this position by the end of January, early part of February next year. Once a conditional offer would be offered to the selected candidate, plan on having an open house for the community and for council to meet the individual and his or her family as well, is sort of what I have in mind. Also, I'll remind, not you guys, but the community, that this position truly is a number two in this organization of 650 full-time employees, whereas in the past, we had an assistant city manager position that oversaw three different departments, did not have that direct contact with the remaining, you know, seven or eight that we have. So with that vacancy, saw an opportunity to eliminate the assistant city manager position and create a deputy city manager, and that deputy city manager will serve in between me and all of the department directors. So, really looking forward to that opportunity, you know, here, you know, next month or two. All right, shifting gears again. City clerk, first off, congratulations to Cherry, and I, I will confess that I was one of her references, and for a split second, when I got the call, I thought, I think I'm going to say something that's not true, but didn't. She's an exceptional employee, and I probably am part of the reason that she got the job, but it was the truth. So, good luck to you, Cherry. Secondly, Leslie Yocum, there she is, come up to, yep, the podium, and this is what we're doing in the interim. Leslie was one of the applicants for the position, and Leslie's currently a contract administrator for the city, has been here for a couple of years, and in her interview really piqued my interest. Leslie has a law background. Leslie has filled in the interim prior to Cherry Lawson serving as our city clerk, and then obviously, in her duties, she has direct, almost daily, you know, if not daily, interaction with the clerk's office. So we're in this interview, and she has ideas for the clerk's office, ideas that really piqued my interest. I mean, efficiency ideas, cost-saving ideas, and came to the decision that this is a person that I'd like to have in an interim basis. Let's make sure that once you're in this position, that this, in fact, plays out like you think it could. And then also gives her an opportunity to make sure that she wants this position, you know, on a permanent basis. In the interim, the decision has been made, the offer's been extended, Leslie's accepted. If this is to become permanent down the road, that's one step that has to come back before council, as you guys are aware. Again, that's more so for the community, but just wanted to share sort of what the next steps were. Leslie, I'm going to turn it over to you to say hey to, you know, the council and the community, but I'm very excited about Leslie taking this position.
Thank you. I know you all pretty well. I'm excited to get to know you all on a closer level and to explore some of the opportunities that I see. In my current role as contract administrator, I've recognized some duplication in the things that happen in the clerk's office, and I think there's some great opportunities that, that Tim is giving me the opportunity to explore a little bit further. And again, let me see, let me get my feet wet, make sure it's something that is well-suited for my family as well. So, thank you for the opportunity and look forward to serving with you.
Thank you, Leslie. Thank you. Thanks, Tim.
I got one more, Mayor and Council. I just simply wanted to, to the community and to you guys, want to say happy holidays. If anybody's traveling, safe travels, and, you know, look forward to 2019 for the city of Bloomington. Thank you.
Thank you. And at this point, we, under Mayor's discussion, I have two things. One's a very specific one, and one is more general. The very specific thing is to wish Alderwoman Karen Schmidt a happy birthday, and the broader is, I kind of wanted to ask, you know, did that affect the kind of presents you got when you were a kid, because it's so close to Christmas, but...
No, actually, I got two weeks before Christmas, so there's no graceful way. Now, my husband is December 24th, so he got the, like, here you go, buddy. Yeah, no, so I'm good.
Oh, December 24th is worse, probably, I guess, but nobody will forget that, though, I guess. Easy to remember. And then also just happy holidays, however you're celebrating holidays, and Merry Christmas to everybody, and thank you all. At this point, Alderman comments? Seeing none? Oh, my God. Oh, oh, we do have one. I was going to say, we're going to get out of here in under a half an hour.
No. I just wanted to say again, good luck to Cherry, and thanks for your service to the city. I know you've put in some long hours, and I hope you and Nicholas enjoy your new digs.
And don't feel guilty? Oh, Alderman Malumbway.
Again, I'm going to say ditto. Thank you so much for all the great work that you've done and for being so pleasant under sometimes difficult circumstances, very pleasant to work with, but I wanted to also give you an opportunity to maybe say a couple of words, maybe what you're doing next, because we all are curious.
I have accepted the position of town clerk for the town of Morana, not Illinois, Arizona. Sorry. Am I start? There is January 14th, and so I'm going to a town with a population of about 46,000 individuals that live there. So, taking a little Illinois with me there.
Thanks again, Cherry. We will miss you, and don't feel guilty. Is there a, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Moved by Alderman Scott Black, second by Alderwoman Karen Schmidt. Everyone, excuse me. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, 28 minutes. That's pretty close to one of our records. We're adjourned.